I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Emmettance. Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Puhatch.
Here.
Mr. Rose.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Schubel.
Present.
Mr. Spicuzzo.
Here.
Mr. Sustich. Six members present this evening.
Thank you, sir. Tonight is my pleasure to present a Keystone Achievement Award to seven of our schools. Keystone Achievement Awards are presented by the Pennsylvania Department of Education to those schools whose students have made adequate yearly progress, or AYP, on the PSSA exams the past two school years in grades three through eight and eleven. The awards I am presenting this evening are for the years 2008, nine, and 2009, ten. You may recall that we normally make this presentation earlier in the school year, but there was a delay in getting the awards from Harrisburg this year. We are pleased nonetheless to be able to present these awards this evening. To attain AYP, at least sixty-three percent of a school's students must score at the advanced or proficient levels in reading, and fifty-six percent must score advanced or proficient in math. I am pleased that Bethel Park's scores were above the state averages in all categories. You may be interested to know that more than twenty-one hundred of Pennsylvania's thirty-one hundred schools have earned this award. We are especially proud of the fact that our five elementary schools have earned this award for the sixth consecutive year, which is how many years they have been eligible to receive this honor. At this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Rose to help me present these awards to our principals.
As I call each of the principals up to receive their awards, would you please come on up to the mic? It might help, since we have a little bit of a crowd, if you come around and just wait over on this side. Principals, do you want to please stand? All right. Let's start with Independence Middle School. Mr. David Minch, principal; Mr. George Spalaris, assistant principal. And at NAMM's Neil Armstrong Middle School, Ms. Janet O'Rourke, the principal, and Michael Rookie, assistant principal. Congratulations to the administrators, to their staff, and to the students on a job well done. Thank you.
I did want to take a moment to mention why Bethel Park High School did not earn a Keystone Achievement Award this year. The school's overall scores were good enough for AYP status, but one of our subgroups of students did not make AYP in reading, thus eliminating the high school from earning the award. However, the high school's overall scores and all of the other subgroups were high enough to make AYP, and those scores contributed to the district as a whole making AYP for the year. And I need an intent to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 21st, 2011.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held April 25th, 2011, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; May 17th, 2011, personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; and May 26th, 2011, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, Mrs. Rose.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. As always, I'm pleased to be able to share the following items of achievement with you. The Bethel Park High School chapter of the National Honor Society recently inducted ninety-two new members at its 2011 induction ceremony. The new group of inductees included three seniors, seventeen juniors, and seventy-two sophomores. Students who are selected for membership must have a minimum 3.85 QPA, participate in at least thirty-five hours of community service per year, and demonstrate leadership and character. Congratulations to this year's inductees. Bethel Park High School sophomore Juliana Buckwald has been selected to attend the University of Pittsburgh Health and Career Scholars Academy this July. You may better remember this program as the Governor's School for Health. Juliana will be one of one-hundred-and-ten Pennsylvania high school students to participate in this program. Julie completed a rigorous application process that demonstrated her academic achievement, especially in the sciences, as well as her record of leadership and service activities. She will live at Pitt for a four-week program this summer, where she will attend lectures, shadow healthcare professionals, and attend at different healthcare facilities while participating in research and independent study. Congratulations, Juliana. Seven of our high school DECA students earned awards of excellence at the DECA International Career Development Conference recently held in Orlando, Florida. Awards of excellence are given to those students who place in the top twenty percent of competitors in their event. The students competed against approximately one-hundred-and-fifty students and/or teams in each event. Congratulations to Thomas Bailey, Molly Schatzl, David Black, Matt Dupree, Brett Reese, Ashley Gerst, and Megan Murray for this outstanding accomplishment. Four Bethel Park High School students received excellence in technology awards from the Bethel Upper St. Clair Rotary Club at a dinner held in their honor at the St. Clair Country Club. Congratulations to Nicole Hester, Brett Mormon, Gregory Pahoditch, and Mark Render for their excellent work in our various technology education classes offered at the The Bethel Park High School German Club, many of whom are in attendance tonight, recently inducted twenty-two students into the high school's chapter of the Delta Epsilon Phi German National Honor Society. In order to qualify for induction, these students are required to have completed at least three semesters of German study and have a minimum 3.6 GPA in German and a minimum of 3.0 GPA in other courses, as well as demonstrate continued commitment to the study of the The Bethel Park High School Music Department recently completed its successful spring music trip to the Festivals of Music in Orlando, Florida, bringing home nine superior ratings, eight Best-in-Class awards, six Best Overall Gold awards, two Excellent Ratings, two Best Overall Bronze awards, as well as five Outstanding awards, and three Best Overall Section awards. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Kevin Harvey, who was presented with the Outstanding Jazz Solo Special Award, and Mark Debsky, who received the Outstanding Concert Band Solo Special Award. Congratulations. Our ninth-grade music students also did very well at their annual music trip to Hershey, bringing home seven awards, including one Superior Rating, two Excellent Ratings, three First Place Awards, and one Second Place Award. The Bethel Park High School Athletic Department recently hosted an after-school reception in the high school cafeteria to recognize the forty-two student athletes who will continue their athletic careers on the collegiate level. We are proud of all of these students and wish them well as they take their athletic skills to the next level. Four Independence Middle School students competed in the National Fluid Power Association's Fluid Power Challenge, earning first place in the portfolio competition and first place overall. Members of the IMS team were Austin Habovic, Eric Metzmar, Danielle Aello, and Rebecca Swainy. They competed against twenty different teams in this competition, which helped them learn about the basics of hydraulics. The IMS team was even featured in a video put together by the NFPA. We are very proud of their accomplishment in their first year of competition. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Student Government?
Oh, it's not? Okay, there we go. Right now, SGA is just winding down our year. It's almost over. Our elections are coming up for Ways and Means Presidents for each grade, and our senators for student government. Our new president next year is Angelina Hernley. And for our school board reps, we have a new one for next year. She's right here. Her name is Sydney Craig, and she'll be taking over my spot, and I'll be taking over Michael Sanctus, who's not here tonight, but I'll be taking over his spot for next year. That's pretty much all we have for right now. Thanks.
Do we have any report from PTA/PTO Council? Yes. Come to the mic?
Memorial Elementary School would like to report that they had a fun fair with a slide, food, games, ice cream, and everyone had a fun time. They're planning for their Field Day, which will be in June, and then they're also planning to have a Get Ready for Reading for the Summer, a scholastic book fair. William Penn would like to... We're going to have a Black and Orange Day on June 9th to celebrate Bethel Park's one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. We're going to have a luau on June 16th for our families and new families that will be coming to William Penn. And our Olympics will be on June 3rd.
Thank you.
I have submitted a written report.
Thank you, sir. We don't have any committee reports. Before we begin our public comments this evening, I want to take the time to give you a brief update about where the district is with the 2011-12 budget process. As you are already aware, the state's proposed budget for 2011-12 greatly reduces the amount of money school districts across Pennsylvania will receive in the form of state subsidy. For Bethel Park, this amount is approximately 1.3 million dollars. Additionally, the state legislation limits how much school districts are permitted to raise taxes, and in Bethel Park's case, that millage increase is capped at .966 mils. For the past two months, the district has looked at every line item in the budget to make sure that the cuts that need to be made are shared equitably across programs and departments. We have already made some cuts, including the elimination of our Summer Reading Academy, elimination of administrative, paraprofessional, and custodial positions, as well as the elimination of four professional positions due to attrition. And even with these cuts, we still need to reduce our budget by $928,000 to meet the maximum .966 millage increase. Tonight, we will be taking the first step to curtail programs and cut staffing, including eliminating eight elementary positions, five middle school positions, and two high school positions due to the decline in class or course enrollments. At the same time, we will also be creating three full-time positions at the elementary level, five halftime positions at the elementary level, and two full-time positions at the middle school level to create a more efficient and effective educational program. Next year, we will not be offering programs such as the China Experience at the high school and third-grade strings at the elementary level for economic reasons. Our introduction to foreign language classes at Neil Armstrong will be replaced with a keyboarding technology class. Those students who are impacted by any of these class changes, if they have not already been contacted, will be contacted shortly to make other choices for their schedules should they be scheduled for a class that will not be offered next school year. Many of these classes, such as German I and Journalism, will not be offered due to a lack of enrollment, not because the program has been cut. Additionally, we will continue to pursue other sources of revenue to balance the budget, including assessing fees for students to participate in sports and activities. We are in the process of scheduling meetings with our booster groups to discuss this. However, we have decided to delay eliminating student transportation to daycare centers that are located outside of a student's elementary attendance zone until the 2012-13 school year. We are in the process of finalizing that plan, which we will share with parents in the fall, so they will have enough time to adequately make other arrangements for their children, well in advance of the beginning of the 2012-13 school year. We have also been busy meeting with representatives from Governor Corbett's office to share our concerns about a variety of issues, including how the state's budget adversely impacts schools, programs, and staffing, our inability to raise taxes to cover state shortfalls and subsidies, the negative impact of the possible elimination of Act I exceptions, the added burden of increasing taxes on our homeowners, and limiting a teacher's ability to strike. We felt we had a positive conversation and have extended a similar invitation to our elected officials in Harrisburg to meet with us about similar issues, and currently we have two such meetings scheduled in the near future. Passing a budget that falls within all the legal parameters the district is facing and not having a negative impact on our programs is impossible. There isn't a cut that can be made that won't negatively affect someone. That is one of the reasons we are postponing passing the 2011-12 budget until our June 30th meeting. We are still holding out hope that the governor's budget might change and additional funding to school districts will be restored. But in the meantime, we must take the steps we have scheduled to take this evening to get the process moving forward. It is not something we take pleasure in doing, but in light of the situation we are facing, it is something we have to do. Anyone who wishes to speak now on agenda items only may come to the microphone. We are limited to Bethel Park residents speaking for two minutes. I need your name and address if you so choose to come to the microphone.
My name is Steve Husser. I live at 5600 Library Road, apartment 16A. I've been communicating with the school board this week. I've got a couple responses back from Assistant Superintendent Rose. I appreciate that. But I still am not really kind of overall very satisfied with the response from the board and even from Ms. Cook's statement recently and now. I think that, you know, obviously with the furloughs and program cuts that are on the agenda for tonight and that have been a talk of the community for quite some time, you know, there's the statement of, you know, the board or the administration's been doing so much over the past two months to try to address these cuts and try to find alternative solutions, and I think the community has seen very little of that. I think the community, there's been very little public information about what the specifics, alternatives that are being sought are. I think there's been no updates on the website, there's been no statements from board or superintendent, and I kind of think this means one of two things. It either means that the school board actually has not been doing a whole lot to address these concerns, which obviously is unacceptable when you have an auditorium full of community members asking for solutions to a problem, talking to the board for hours and hours. You know, those concerns need to be addressed, or that the school board has been doing a lot of these things, but they just haven't been communicating them very well with the community. If that's the case, I also find that to be unacceptable, because this needs to be a public process. This is something that the entire community has a stake in, and obviously, tons of people are interested in it, and we need to know what's going on regarding that. So kind of here we are at a moment of making some of these cuts that are going to be a drastic mistake, that are going to negatively impact our teachers, our students, but the community is left feeling like not everything that could have been done has been done, and feeling like the school board isn't really addressing the concerns that have been brought to the table and hasn't been communicating those concerns. So I guess my question moving forward, the important question moving forward is, is the school board, is the administration going to address the concerns that are spoken about tonight? And are we going to hear about what specifically is going to be done? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Vabrick, and I live at 728 Marvel Valley Drive. I've been up before the board before, and I had this great speech, and now things have changed a little bit. I think you've made a move in the right direction. I will say this about the strings program, about not starting third-grade strings. I think in the future, over the next several years, you will actually see the decimation of that program. I see what happens in my district from third to fourth grade when the children get to choose band instruments, and I can tell you that the majority of them will leave strings and go to band, or often double. We allow our children to double in the fifth grade. But I also see from fifth to sixth grade that the majority of them go to band. Now, as a band director, that makes me feel good, but I also know that a strings program sets your district apart. It makes you one of the better-than-proficient, the advanced districts. And I know it's very difficult, and I thank you for listening to the public, I really do. I really didn't think you were. And you have taken everything you've heard into account, but I think we need to go a step further, and I understand it's difficult. It's very easy to cut a program. It's very easy, but I think we have to, well, maybe not emotionally, but it is, there are certain things, and I've been through it, that you can say, oh, well, this isn't necessary because it doesn't address all the students. This isn't necessary because the teachers don't get their planning break. I'm in that position myself sometimes. But these programs service so many people.
Mrs. Gabrick, if you could wrap up, please.
I certainly can. Your community wants you to listen to them, and I'm so glad to see that you have been representatives of our wishes and not an agenda that's been brought by certain people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Samantha Stinson. I live at 3324 Threddle. I played my violin at the last school board meeting, and I don't think you should cancel strings. It's a wonderful program, and my little brother Matthew Stinson would like to play it next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joanne Stinson, same address. I just, you know, I thought, how wonderful all these band awards were. Lose third-grade strings? You may not have those awards again. You may not have the same amount of kids entering. My little boy, be third grade next year, he wants to play violin. Give him a couple more years, baseball may take over. You got to get him on the young. Please keep our third-grade strings.
Hi, I'm Josh Lawfer, 5751 Pebble Creek Court, apartment 5302, 2004, Bethel Park alum. I'm mainly here for the German program. For the last ten years, the top fifty kids in the graduating classes, fifteen percent of them are from the German program. Of my graduating class, me and two other people were in the top twenty because of that man over there. My brother is in the program, my sister was in the program. I'm honored in the German in college. It is a wonderful program. I learned so much. It's not about the quantity of education, it's about the quality of education. Because of teachers like that, a role model like that, I was able to go and succeed in college and into my master's degree, and I don't want to see this program to be canceled. I want to see my brother go through and get into the German National Honor Society, the National Honor Society, and excel like I did, and give him the opportunity to do so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, just for protocol of the meeting, German is, there's no German issues on the agenda tonight, so they would have to wait till after the meeting.
That is correct.
Hi, Mary Sharba, 5746 Willow Terrace Drive. Out of all the venues that you've looked at for helping save the programs here, on the news last week, the Pittsburgh Public School System, thirty-five schools has opted to go to four-day work, four-day school weeks with an extra hour every day. That was addressed by a young man the first meeting. Has it been an option for here, to try to save the buses on the fifth day, to try to save the utilities on that fifth day? That is one of the things that struck me. If the Pittsburgh Public School System is opening up to that, why shouldn't we?
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Jason Kramer, 1284 Seane Court. My son Tyler Kramer currently just turned five. He'll be attending Benjamin Franklin School in the fall as a kindergartner. The school district has proposed, not this coming school year, but the following year, to eliminate busing from Tender Care Learning Center, where my son goes on Route 88, to Ben Franklin School, which will make Lois Johnson almost an exclusive provider for the daycare at that school. Now, with those cuts, Lois Johnson does not owe Now, with those cuts, Lois Johnson does not open until 6:30. Tender Care opens at 6:00 AM. I work in Oakland, my wife works in Oakland. I'm a charge nurse at UPMC in the electrophysiology lab, a lab of eight people, where I am required to be at work by seven o'clock. Dropping my son off at 6:30 does not allow me the time to get to work to provide for my family. We are a two-income family because I don't know any family anymore that cannot be a two-income family. So by eliminating the busing from 1.2 miles from Tender Care to Ben Franklin, when you're still allowing busing from Tender Care to Abe Lincoln, which is actually 2.4 miles in a longer trip, you're affecting over 35 students at Tender Care Learning Center. You're also still allowing the busing of students out of the borough to schools like Seton LaSalle. How is that appropriate for all of our students?
Can I just let you know that the plan for which daycares and where the busing routes will be has not been established yet, so the assumption that any daycare is eliminated would be premature.
Okay, well, that's not what I understood from all the articles online, all the articles in the newspaper and all.
We are in the process of refining it. Mr. Howard has suggested that we would be submitting a plan for September. So you'll have more details at that point, you'll have a year to plan.
Okay, that's fine.
Anyone else or we'll move into our business items then. Curriculum Committee? Oh, sorry.
My name is Jennifer Searls, 853 Broughton Road, and I'm here to talk about the music program. We have a petition here for the proposed budget cuts within the Bethel Park School District for the 2011-2012 school year in regard to the Bethel Park Music Department at all education levels. We understand that education in all areas of study is crucial to success. Therefore, cutting anything from any subject and/or department is a difficult decision. This being said, we believe that music is a vital part of life. Music, like any art medium, culturally enriches people and provides the means to becoming a well-rounded citizen. It goes without saying that music has shaped this community in many ways and is a central part of what holds the community of Bethel Park together. We feel that music is very much a core subject because of its cultural significance. We are aware of the tough decisions that lie ahead. However, we feel that if the budget cuts must be made, they can be made without eliminating departments and programs that enrich the lives of students on a cultural level every day.
Hi, my name's Joyce Searls. That happens to be my daughter Jen. I live at 853 Broughton Road. I'm just here to say, save the music. You have to save the music. There's, you're not going to see the effect in a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now. But when you need a group to play at the Mayor's Gold Card Club Meeting, you're not going to have those students. The pride of Bethel Park, you're cutting us off at the knees. You've got to save this music program. Mount Lebanon just unanimously passed their budget for 1112, no program cuts. Can we knock on their door and ask them how they're doing it because we're not able to do it here? Is there, what are we missing? We're missing something. Upper St. Clair is facing the same thing. They're looking at middle school sports. Okay, we have a lot of, you know, and before anybody jumps on the sports thing, I had a middle schooler who also played sports. But there's a lot of options, you know? As a community, we provide a recreation department that has baseball. You can play school baseball, you can play rec baseball, you can play school football, you can play rec football. There's no recreation program for strings. There's no recreation program for music. This is it.
Hi, my name's Karen Rubenek Angone. I live at 1175 Airdale Drive. I'd like to speak to two issues. Firstly, the special education program cuts. When we were awarded the millage increase from a .45 cap to the .96, part of that reason was for our special education programming. My son, in second grade, scored in the 90th percentile on most areas of his Terranova's. He's in learning support. He will not be successful without the pair of professionals that he and other children with special needs and learning disabilities need to survive, need to accelerate, and need to become your future taxpayers. Secondly, the strings program. I have a third grader who plays strings now, loves it, I'm so excited. There will be a fourth grade strings. My second grader has already started playing viola. I have seen a dramatic increase in his grades since he has been taking only private lessons. I cannot imagine, and I'm so excited, about the possible impact of him taking a program that is consistent in the classroom and supported by the school. I do not feel that you have adequately looked at all of the possibilities, including some programming cuts in the sports areas, perhaps decreasing the salaries of coaches. And I temper this by saying, my father was a track and varsity football coach for years and a teacher in this district. My daughter was a varsity sports captain. Every year since she attended, she'll be graduating this year. There hasn't been any talk of having some subsidy from booster organizations to pay for coaches, having some subsidies for families to pay for their participation, or having some subsidies for families to participate in a third grade strings program. Should you continue in your musical education, that becomes an entitlement from the district. Pay Now, we invest in our children. We invest in their sports equipment, in their musical instruments. $65 a month for a cello. I want that program to continue.
Ma'am, if you could wrap up, please.
I will. Everybody here wants that to continue. I think there are better ways to save the money. There are things that we have not looked at, ways that we have not looked at to fund what our community needs to continue the tradition of excellence. Thank you.
Members of the school board, good evening. My name is Warren Roberts. I live at 5509 Clark Avenue. And I come to you not only as a resident of this community, but also as the president of your music booster organization. It was very convenient of you to show the two slides that showed how well our kids did when they went on the trip to Florida. The superiors, the outstanding overall bands, orchestra, Bethet's major, all of that. It's a great program. The ninth grade kids that just competed at Hershey, as you saw, did very well. When we say that we've done everything that we can and we've been through every single line item in the budget, you have to go back. Mrs. Vavrick said that when you, if you take away the strings program at the third grade level, how many kids are you going to pick up that are going to say, I'd rather play a trumpet than a violin? I had a conversation with a mother this evening whose son graduated last year and she said, she couldn't be here, but she said that her son did so well because he played the violin and he was encouraged all the way through the music program. So please, go back and look and look harder and dig deeper. Drill down further and find a way to continue these programs. If you do that, I think the long run and the end result, we have music professionals that are dedicated to the program, to the kids. They're talking about furloughs. Unfortunately, the teachers that we have at this level are in the wrong place at the right time. You know, they're going to wind up in the sites possibly because they're new and they're junior and they don't have seniority. They've talked about instituting a full symphonic orchestra. We already have a symphonic orchestra. The difference being a full symphonic orchestra also institutes drums, percussion, wind, and they're not doing that now. Obviously, that would have to be an after-school or before-school program. The kids would volunteer to do that, I think. You're not going to get the kids winning those kinds of awards and bringing recognition to this district and this community if we cut these programs. So please, please reconsider. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Logan Tuit. I live at 1000 Christine Place. Good evening to members of the board. Obviously, I was here mostly for German, just to give my program some support, but I did plan on talking about the strings program. I'm actually a freshman in the freshman orchestra now. And next Friday, I will be playing my symphonic trial pieces for next year as well as this year, joining the marching band for my sophomore year. And I just want to say that, as you saw with all the awards we got, the from Hershey, the symphonic down at Disney, it's the programs that we have, the music programs and all the outstanding programs that we have that set us apart from other districts. And, you know, nobody looks at districts and says, I'm going to go to the mediocre district. I'm going to go to the district that does what everybody else does. I'm going to go to the one that cuts the programs and the one that saves money and doesn't give a quality education or quality programs to our students. And I, it would be unfair of me just to, you know, and selfish to come up here and say that, save this program because I'm in it. You know, I understand that that's not how things work and that obviously none of us are in a great position here with the board having to make cuts somewhere. But I did find in my review of the agenda earlier today that one thing is the approval of Microsoft licensing over the next five years, which goes 43,000, 48,000, 48,000, 50,000, totaling to 241,000 and somewhat dollars over the next five years. Honestly, it's an unnecessary luxury. It's the little details that can save us the money where, like I said last time when I spoke, I built my own computer and I saved money. I put an operating system completely free, comes with everything that Microsoft Word would give you completely free, it's just a different name. You know, you pay for the brand. I'm sure everybody knows that. My cousin owns a business and he wanted...
Logan, if you could wrap up, please.
Oh, yes, sir, I can. So, you know, it's the, it's the programs that we have that set us apart. And in the long run, whenever you lose these programs, you're losing people who want to come to Bethel Park, which then loses tax dollars, which then puts us in another position just like this in future years. So really, is it that saving that much money to have cuts and mediocre programs? No, because people will come to this district for our reputation. You know, we were ranked in the top in the country. It's on the school board on the page on the website. And I just wanted to present that to you tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I am Matt Stinson, I live at 724 Forest Road. My sister plays strings and she's in third grade and she likes it. And I'm in second grade and I want to play strings too. And so don't cut strings.
Hi, my name's Olivia Dowd. I live at 2777 Tish the Road. I'm here to talk about the music program, obviously. Tonight, I, actually, my parents are divorced. I live a half hour away. My dad went out of his way, even though he works tonight, to take me here so that I could talk to you about this. I mean, it's, it's a big deal for me. It's a big deal for him. He always encouraged me to practice. I mean, I have, he brought me an extra practice clarinet at my house so that I didn't have to tote it back and forth from school in my different houses. Anyway, at the beginning of this year, I was, I took band just because, I mean, I've taken it for a while. I went to Catholic school. It was always fun. It got me out of class. And then this year, I came and it was my first day of band and I just saw how excited the people were. And that was, that was new for me. I mean, it was, I actually, my school closed and I went to a public school in eighth grade. And it was, it was, it was really nice. Like, you could see how happy the people were to just be involved and go to band. Like, it was almost foreign to me. And then this year, I liked band. I didn't really have strong feelings about it per se, but it's like, as soon as I entered this program, it hit me like a freight train. I mean, it was, our band teachers, they, I mean, they're so amazing. You can ask them any question and they'll give you an answer. If you, like, anything you could possibly need, they'll help you out. It's, I've never met anyone that did that. And, I mean, I've come to you before, I've talked at the first meeting, and I want to be a music major just because of the people that sit right there. They're, they impact everything. I mean, you saw how many awards we won. I'm not going to give you statistics. Everyone gives you that. I know you know them. I recognize how hard these budget cuts are and they're going to affect everyone in terrible ways. I realize how hard it is for you. But, I mean, there has to be something. There's always a choice. There's always something else that you can do. And there are all these people in the room, the people that filled up the IMS auditorium. I mean, just talk to...
Olivia, if you could wrap up, please.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. Basically, just, this is such a huge program. We do so much. Just please, save it. It's such, such a big deal.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tyler Stay, 1025 Sarbus Drive. So I'm here to speak out on behalf of strings, German, Latin, whatever it is academically that you're looking to trim fat from. I understand this budget situation is atrocious. It's awful. But, you know, I go to school in the Mid-Ohio Valley right now in Marietta, Ohio, and I tutor these kids that don't have the luxury of having strings programs or award-winning German and Latin programs. And I'm sad, but I'm also grateful because I graduated from this school and it was largely a part due to being in the strings program, due to having Chris Tobias as a German teacher or Alan Conrad as a Latin teacher. And I don't think I'd be getting my bachelor's in physics right now if it wasn't for them. You know, it's those extracurricular activities, you know, like strings, that propel students to another level and allow you to achieve those blue whatever awards they were. It's that that just like makes learning fun. It gives, it gives you something to live for as a student. And I would hate to see that go because I see, you know, I see the schools in Ohio and how they suffer from having had to cut those programs. It's awful. It is absolutely, it's horrible and heartbreaking to watch and I would hate to see that have to have go here. The lady who spoke out about my 11th school district, I mean, maybe there is something there, maybe there isn't. I know different budgets have different circumstances. It's tough. But, you know, when I look at that new stadium down there and that high school coming up, as a taxpayer, I'm scratching my head. I understand the circumstances are different, different years and you can't really plan for that, but still, as a taxpayer and voter, I would still want to scratch my head if I see German and Latin and strings disappear. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Dillon. I'm from 51 Town West Library Avenue in Bethel. We've heard passionate statements about the proposals to cut various programs because of the financial cuts that need to be made to achieve a budget that the school district can afford. When the district received more money, it was from a federal stimulus that was not a yearly guarantee. Now, when the money's not there, there's some difficult decisions that need to be made. Teachers whose programs are being targeted are upset, of course. So are parents. Many have decided, many of the teachers have decided to enlist their students as their voices, putting them to work, signing petitions, and making them the ones to say to the school board and the public, please don't cut our programs. And yet, we do not have a teacher's contract, even with the budget difficulties. Imagine how much more difficult it's going to be if the teachers get what they asked for in their final best offer? How many more programs would have to be cut then? Administrators in Bethel Park graciously agreed to take a wage freeze. Where's the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers and why aren't they putting their money where the students' mouths are? Parents, it's time to step up the pressure on the union. Walt Machaski, leader of the Bethel Park Federation, immediately said he wasn't interested in making concessions on open contracts after Governor Corbett's budget came out. Does that sound like someone who's interested in saving programs for the kids and not saving, and for saving the jobs of his constituents? North Allegheny and AMT membership recently made contract concessions that include a first-year wage freeze, smaller raises in three other years and increased contributions to healthcare costs. And they got a two-year extension out of it and saved jobs. New Brighton and Central Valley agreed to stay... New Brighton and Central Valley agree to salary concessions that will eliminate furloughs, saving jobs and programs. The union has the power to save programs and save some of their own jobs. Give a little more to healthcare, give a little more to pensions, rein in the, rein in the out-of-control steps and raises, and the money will be there to save the programs and your jobs. That is, if it's really for the children.
Hi, Joanne Simpson again. I can assure you, no teachers made my two children come here tonight to beg for their string program.
I live at five-six-zero-four Diane Drive. And I just came here to see what's going on about the German program, and that's not on the agenda for today. And then I heard that it's proposed to cut the foreign language intro programs in favor of a keyboarding or technology class. Just to say, almost every kid, child in this country knows how to type on a computer. They walk around all day typing on their little cell phones and things. They don't need a keyboarding class. How many students in our country can speak a foreign language? Not many. In other countries in the world, they learn to speak multiple languages at young ages. So you want to cut intro programs like that in favor of technology programs that, that teach things the students already know? They, what do they do when they come home after school? They go on the computer. They know how to type. They don't need classes for that. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Walter and I live at four-twenty-nine Linwood Drive. And I am obviously here to speak about the music program. I spoke with the board the last meeting. And I have been so affected by the music program throughout my whole life, and it has just completely changed me as a person. And actually, tomorrow, I am auditioning for every leadership position I possibly can in the marching band because I just love it so much and I want to have the biggest part I can in making it, everybody have that same experience as I have. And whenever we went down to Disney, everybody has already said we've won so many awards and so many of those was for the strings. We, they set a record from Bethel Park. And if you cut the strings program in third grade, we're not going to have those. So, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into our business agenda.
Hi, I'm Amanda Boardley, thirty-six-eighty Ashland Drive. I appreciated all the comments that all of you made, and I happen to agree with them, but that's not why I'm up here right now. Thank you for coming and making them. Under the approval of change orders for the high school project, I see we have a large deduct amount of forty-five thousand, approximately seven-hundred dollars for something called coiling grills. And I would just like someone to address that before the board votes on it because I don't know what it is and I, I just would like to know what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring that up when we get to that business item. Anyone else?
I'm Hannah Lavelle. I live at one-zero-eight Horning Road. And I just want to speak to you about cutting some of these programs. I know I mainly came here for German, but on these other programs, I really would like to catch your attention because I go on a trip called work camp every year with my youth group. And on these work camps, we have time with children, and in the morning, they have what they call school. And in these schools, we teach them the fundamentals of math and English and reading, but a lot of these kids I see are struggling. And as I talk to them, I learned that in their schools, they don't have music. They don't have languages, and they don't have a special needs program for the kids that need it. So here, why do we want to cut something that those kids there don't even get the chance to have? So I'm just saying, look at other things, talk to the students, because they have opinions too. We have ideas too that may actually help you with what you need to cut. So I mean, go out and talk to the students. They will appreciate it. They will respect you more if you do that. So I'm just saying, think about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ken Crowley. I live at one-nineteen Heather Drive. The board spoke at the beginning about doing everything they can, looking at everything they can. And we've heard how other districts have not raised their taxes. They've looked at other programs, not academically. Other districts have come out with a Plan A, a Plan B. I'm not really sure I've ever even seen a Plan A from this district. From the beginning, we've heard that it's furloughs, 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 and here tonight, it's still furloughs. I've never heard you talk about what else are you cutting other than teachers? What else are you cutting other than academic programs? You know, originally, we talked about cutting transportation and daycare starting this school year. That was in the newspaper the other day. We find out that's not true tonight. The first gentleman spoke about communication, and I really think that the district has not done a good job. If you've considered Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, you've not done a good job of communicating that to the taxpayers who've come here and spoke. I've seen nothing on the website about other alternative scenarios. If I went on Ken McMillan's website tonight, I could see Plan A and Plan B. I could see the proposed with furloughs. I could see the proposed with just academic program cuts. Why don't you show us what else could you cut other than, you know, academic programs, other than these other things? I believe it was Mrs. Cook that spoke at the beginning about administrative curtailment. When I look at the furlough positions tonight, I do not see one administrator's name on that. One of my other concerns is that we received an email from the district that we would not be approving the budget tonight. When I look here and I see that furloughs are being considered, staffing is a huge part of your budget. So to me, when you're furloughing teachers tonight, when you're voting on eliminating positions, you're already talking about next year's budget. And you told the community that this meeting was not about approving the budget.
It is not about approving the budget. We must do the furlough, furloughing within certain amount of time. Teachers have to be notified that that is a possibility that can occur. You can see in other districts where they have furloughed forty-five and fifty instructors' positions because it has to be done on a certain timeline.
They've also furloughed administrators in those districts.
And our administrators have taken a wage freeze.
I understand, I understand that. I'm just saying, we haven't, as far as the public knows, we haven't heard all the alternatives. And when I look, we had a gentleman speak about Microsoft Office earlier. I see that we're approving someone to go to a conference for thirty-five-hundred dollars tonight. Is this conference really necessary for their curriculum, for them to be going to that conference?
Yes, it is.
It is?
Ken, if you could wrap up, please?
That's it, I'm finished.
Hi, my name's Autumn Fleckenstein and I live at four-nine-two Lorita Lane. I play, I play girls lacrosse. I'm in the march, I'm not in the marching band yet, but I signed up. I play the clarinet. And I also speak German. I do all these things. I'm so proud of myself and so are my parents, but when I tell people what I do, I'm no more proud to say that I speak German. I've never had a teacher as wonderful as Herr Tobias. I've never had this quality of learning as well. And I wouldn't have as well unless I had these intro to languages. My brother's in sixth grade. He's currently going to move up-
Autumn, the, the intro to languages, the, you're, are you addressing the fifth-grade intro to language program?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry. My brother's so excited to go and to speak German, and there's much younger kids that want to go up and that want to learn these multiple languages. So they are prepped, so when they go into sixth, I mean, seventh and eighth grade and the ninth grade. I, I would never be as good as I was without Frau Wagner, who taught me in sixth grade, who taught me in eighth grade. She prepped me so well for German because she, when we had those nine weeks with her, she taught us so well each of those languages. And it's, I compare it to my lacrosse team. I started the middle school girls' lacrosse team, and we wouldn't have done as well as we did in high school without having this coach prep us for it. And I'm just comparing it because without these intro to language teachers, I wouldn't have done as well as I did in German. It's not about the quantity, it's about the quality, and I've never had this good quality of teaching when it came to foreign language. Thank you.
My name is Katie Zlakowski. I live at five-eight-three-two King School Road, and I'd just like to say hello to all the board members tonight. I'm here, I was here primarily for the German program, but now that I heard about the music, I'm here to speak about that. I'd like to talk about, the other night, I played with the elementary programs, third and fourth grade, at their concert, and how many of them there were and how ecstatic and excited they were just to play their instruments was so impressive to all of us. And it just, it continues throughout your entire orchestra career. It just, I went to Hershey this year and I had the absolute time of my life. Just, you make so many new friends and so many things that benefit you throughout your entire life. You learn discipline and how to practice and things like that, and teachers like Mrs. Er-, Mrs. Irwin and I, Mrs. Alstead, and now I have Mrs. Glover, and I had Mr. Campion. They're all wonderful teachers who teach you so much, not just mathematics or English or history. It teaches you more than just like basic, like, subjects. It teaches you life lessons. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll try for a third time moving into business items. Curriculum committee and Mr. Spikusa.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing four items, would anyone on the board like any of the items held out separately? I move the following four items. Item number one, curriculum facilitators for two thousand eleven-twelve. Item number two, curricula writing two thousand eleven-twelve. Read number, item number three, read one-eighty, next generation upgrade. And item number four, conference attendance.
Items one through four under curriculum committee have been moved by Mr. Spikusa and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on these items? Mrs. Rose, would you please adjust, address the gentleman asking about the conference attendance of one of our instructors at the high school who will be going to a conference and whether that impacts curriculum?
Well, our high school technology department has implemented a program that addresses the new standards for technology instruction, including Project Lead the Way. It's basically a program that institutes engineering, mathematics, science, technology, and is referred to as the STEM standards that the state and the, and the nation has adopted. It's a rather prestigious program. It's very high rigor. And in order to receive some initial grant funds that we accepted, part of the obligation is that we would also train our staff. So in order to implement the program, the teachers, before they can teach the classes, have to attend a session that's two weeks long at a college/university campus. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, and that is going to be held June twentieth to July first. Any other questions or comments on curriculum items? All in favor of items one through four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Personnel committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are eight items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held up?
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Item number two, approval of extra duty responsibility program. I'd like to pull that up, please.
Any others? If not, I will move that items one, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight be approved, and they are as follows. One is approval of substitutes. Three is acceptance of resignations. Four is approval of summer health for custodial maintenance staff. And five is approval to extend unpaid leave of absence. And six is two thousand ten, two thousand eleven alternative education program. Seven is approval of curtailment and alteration of educational programs. And eight is the approval of staffing change.
I need a second?
Second.
Items one and three through eight under personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spikusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Mrs. Rule.
Okay, and move item two under personnel, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Be moved.
Did I need a second?
Second.
Item two has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Mrs. Cook.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I'll be voting no on all of these appointments. I want to explain my position publicly. It's actually about one particular coaching situation that I'm very displeased with. I won't, under advice from our council, I won't acknowledge the details of that. I've made the administration known about my concerns about this particular coach, and I'll leave it at that. But I will be voting no on all the appointments, but I want, for the record, it's, it's really about one particular coach.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on item two? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That item carries five to one. Facilities and Services Committee, Mr. Puhatch, would you take that for me this evening?
There are three items under Facilities and Services Committee. Would anyone like any of them held out?
I'd like to have two held out, change order.
Then I hear, I hereby move item one A, awarding of transportation maintenance building roof bid, and item one B, purchasing of transportation maintenance building roof bid materials. Second.
Item one A and one B under Facilities and Services have been moved by Mr. Puhatch and seconded by Mr. Spikusa. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Mr. Puhatch?
I hereby move item two, approval of change orders for the high school project. They are as follows. Change order number G C zero-three-zero to Mascarac Construction Company in the deduct amount of twenty thousand zero-two-zero-point-nine-seven. Change order P L zero-zero-nine, pool sump pump to Verbal Plumbing in the amount of eighteen thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine. And change order E L zero-one-two, repair damaged conduits to Clista Electric Inc. in the amount of one thousand four-sixty-seven-fifty-six. Second.
Thank you. Item two has been moved by Mr. Puhatch and seconded by Mr. Spikusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I do on the change order regarding the sump pump. Matt, I would like for you to tell me what were the options listed that we could have as opposed to a sump pump?
Sure. There, there were a couple of options considered with regard to the sump pump. One option was to put a drain at the bottom of the pool to, to catch the water. However, the, the storm sewers put into the project, the pool level is below the storm sewer that is established in the project, so we could not do that at a cost-effective manner. The second was do nothing at all. We considered doing nothing and leaving the water there. We disregarded that option too, as we learned more about what could happen with the water in the pool area. We had an option where we considered putting a drain into the foundation, through the foundation wall into the foundation drain, and we did not consider that one in the end. And then we found that the sump pump was the best option for the district, and that's what we're recommending.
I guess my question is that, why did it take so long for the district to be aware of that problem issue going to be under the pool? I have a hard time paying seventy-two million dollars for a building and have to live with a sump pump. And why wasn't that made aware to us earlier?
Well, I mean, that's probably a, a question for, you know, the architect and the-
Right.
-construction manager also, but I can do my best to address that if you, if you'd like. We did do the core samples throughout the site.
Mm-hmm.
The core samples showed soil that was not as wet as we, as, as we found when we started to dig with the shovel and with the backhoe. The reason that the pool itself was not discovered in, in the beginning of the project is because a decision was made earlier in the project to dig the pool after the building was up. So we just started to dig the pool probably in the February, March timeframe, and that's when the water was discovered after the building was already up.
When this sump pump does not work, like, I've had a sump pump, so I know how they work. When the electricity goes off, what happens? And how do we handle it?
Sure, the sump pump itself will be alarmed. If the sump pump continues to not work, there will be an alarm system tied to our control system in the, in the building. system in the building. So we will know if the sump pump does not work. Also, the buildup of water around the pool does not present a problem on an ongoing basis. If there is water that builds up around the pool, it is okay. It doesn't present an immediate problem. The immediate problem would come if we drain the pool while there, and water is around the pool, and then there could be a problem associated with that. But the sump pump itself is alarmed.
And hopefully the alarm works all the time? Or if it malfunctions, what's the outcome?
Well, like I said, we would, we would, the...
Have to drain the pool and...
No, the pool would never need drained. Only time we have to make sure that there is no water around the pool is when we drain the pool. So we would be able to check that manually if there is water around the pool.
Well, you know, we knew there was a lot of water. I mean, that is a creek bed from the word go. That's why the high school was up here originally, because you had all those waters, and you've had a retention put in, it's been a flood plain. We know that this has been a problem. I am really concerned about it. I mean, water always creates problems. I don't care, I wouldn't build a $72 million house and live with a sump pump. I would like to see a guarantee in writing from the construction people, whoever, I don't know, who we'd have to go to, to tell me that I am not going to be liable for problems in the future, because water will come back to haunt you. I can tell you that. And I will be voting no against this change order until I know that we have some type of resolution that I feel the district can live with for $72 million.
Can we talk to them about that?
We can. I can explore that. This was a decision that was recommended by our construction.
Construction, right. Also, could you address the deduct amount of $45,000 plus on the coiling grills, please?
Sure. Throughout the building, there was scheduled to be coiling grills, security coiling grills throughout the hallways of the building. We were able to revisit that and eliminate a series of those coiling grills and still maintain the same security that we were, that we wanted to, and that's what incurred the credit.
So they're actually those drop-down...
They're drop-down, drop-down gates, for lack of a better...
Gates, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the change orders number two? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That item carries five to one. Finance committee, Mrs. Buckley, would you like to take that for me this evening?
There are 11 items on the finance. Would anyone like any separated? Hearing none, I move item number one, May 2011 salaries and bills. Number two, April 2011 financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, approval of the relocation of fiber connection projects. Number five, Pathfinder School Administrative Budget. Six, educational service agreement with the AIU. Number seven, approval of a breakfast program at Memorial, Washington and William Penn Elementary Schools. Number eight, reappointment of the school physician. Number nine, reappointment of the school dentist. Number 10, approval of Microsoft licensing. And number 11, approval of extended daycare program.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through 11 under finance have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spakusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I just want to make a comment on item number 10, the approval of Microsoft licensing.
Yes, sir.
The number that we're showing here for year one in 2012 is $43,000 and $700. The total's $241,000 and roughly $400. That represents a massive savings to the district from previous to the negotiated levels of Microsoft, and I want to thank the administration, particularly Mr. Ryer, for his efforts in securing that savings for the district.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. We are up to public comments on anything you wish to address the board about. Doesn't have to be on an agenda item. You have two minutes. Name and address at the microphone, please.
Anita Potocar, Mapleview Drive. Having come to many, many, many years of meetings, I think the board should be very thankful tonight to hear some of the wonderful suggestion, suggestions, wobbly like me. Anyway, suggestions about trying to save money. Many, many years, thousands and thousands of dollars has been spent on technology, and I think a couple of young people remarked about it tonight. Everyone has a computer at home. You come, except us, but you come to school to learn language, music. You can't always get that at home. I think these ideas were very constructive tonight, and I'm hoping, and I'm sure the board will listen and try to do what they can to keep the wonderful programs, or at least, I can't believe that we're giving up a language teacher. That's my suggestions all the many years about improving, starting language in the younger grades. I can't believe we're giving up a language teacher for technology. Anyway, hope the board will find that the good ideas here will be productive. Thank you.
Brenda Paisor, 3224 Arapahoe Road. Pardon me, I'm losing my voice a bit. I wanted to let you know that my children have benefited from these programs that have been mentioned tonight, both German and the music program. They've been fine programs. My children have also benefited from things the Bethel Park School District doesn't offer. A school district, as much as we'd like to, can't offer everything our children want and/or need. I have, my daughter started piano lessons in second grade. She, in third grade, started a string instrument. In fourth grade, she moved on to a band instrument, which she did continue through high school, and it brought her a lot of joy in being involved with the program, and it is an excellent program. But, in this, now that she's on to college, that instrument is sitting in a corner collecting dust in her room. She is still playing the piano. My point is, I sought out, she also took dance lessons, karate lessons, dah 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 dah. There are things that we have to sometimes seek out for our kids that the school district doesn't offer. Somebody mentioned the ability to play rec sports. Why isn't there rec springs, strings? Maybe that's an option. I don't think it has to be within the school district. Certainly, children benefit from dance lessons and piano lessons and whatnot outside of the school district. There are other options, and unfortunately, we have to look at them now. My kids would have benefited from world travel. That's something you don't offer either. I commend the administration for accepting a wage freeze for the next year. I would like to hear and be able to commend others from taking wage freezes within the district to also save jobs. I haven't heard that. I haven't heard any indication that that's even being looked at. I mean, people are talking about, what are you looking at? What are other people looking at? What are other entities within the school district looking at? Every department is wasting money, as far as I can see.
Brenda, if you could wrap up, please.
Okay, I will. I'll just point out that I have been following this in Bethel Park and across the state and across the country, and unfortunately, these kinds of cuts are being looked at throughout the country, and we need to look at our other options to avoid future cuts and what we can do to give our children what we think they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Leah Kroll. I live at 5836 Glenora Drive, and I graduated in 2007 from Bethel Park, and I was in the German program. I completed German V. I was in the German Honor Society and the German Club. I also recently, just this week, graduated from Mercer's College with honors and two majors in education. So I realize after spending all the time at Mercyhurst, learning what an effective classroom looks like, that the German program goes above and beyond everything that I have seen. And Mr. Tobias is a very, very passionate teacher, and I've never actually seen a teacher more passionate than he is. I was completely shocked to learn that this program is in jeopardy, because that would be an entire mistake to remove the program. This is an excellent program. Everyone that graduates from the program goes on in higher education to excel. It's just, it's a privilege to have this program. It should not be taken away, I'm sure of that. When I was a freshman, my grades were mediocre, and then I went on and I got an A in German for the very first time, and because the standards are so high in this German program, I realized I can do anything academically. Because of that, my grades went up. I started receiving straight A's my entire high school, I think at least, maybe some B's, but anyways, I went on and I was able to get into every college I applied for, and I got academic scholarships to all of those colleges. And that's the same for any student that has graduated from his AP German program. It's amazing, and it would be an entire mistake to just drop the program, so take that into consideration, please.
My name's Matthew McCoyack. I live at 1283 Bethel Green Drive, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the German program. It will be hard to say anything different than what's already been said about the German program, because there's been so many comments about it. Its prestige is evident. It's well-known for having high standards and being a tough class, as it should be, because learning a foreign language is difficult. And to cut the elementary, the foreign language programs in the middle schools would be a huge mistake. It has been proven by many studies that the younger you are, the easier time you have of picking up a foreign language, because you're learning it as you are learning English. Therefore, you are improving your skills and improving your ability. So I would like to say that cutting it at the middle school age would be a very big mistake. Also, I am a member of the Delta Epsilon Phi, which is the German National Honor Society and the National Honor Society here at Bethel Park. I continue to maintain my position by achieving good grades in both German and other academic sects, and I would like to say that I do so without the help of smart boards or any of the other things that we will have at the new school. They're nice. I get it, they really are. But what I've learned is that I only need three things for German class: a binder, a pencil, and an open mind, and the rest just kind of falls into place. I plan to study German when I go into college. I hope to at least take it in college and maybe someday get to Germany, because Germany in itself is a very, very well-rounded nation. Its academic levels are far higher than America, because they excel, and it's a very, very good country for business, and cutting the German program at the middle school level would decrease the ability in the kids who take it in high school and later on in middle school, and in college for that matter, too. Thank you.
Hi. I'd like to say hi to everyone here tonight. My name is Shannon Kunisk. I live at 327 Carlton Road. I'm a 2004 graduate of the Bethel Park High School, and I would like to address the middle school language programs. I have a degree in linguistics, and so through the course of studying linguistics at the University of Pittsburgh, I've learned the value of learning a language at a young age. And to be perfectly honest, it's somewhat surprising to me that we have a string program as young as, you know, third grade, but we don't have language until fifth grade, because language is really important, and especially for a school which should be focused on academics, it's even more important than a lot of extracurricular programs. So I noticed in the agenda that you guys are approving a position for a keyboarding class, which is fantastic. I took keyboarding at the high school level, but I didn't take it till, I think, 11th grade, 10th or 11th grade, somewhere in there. And I can type 72 words per minute. It really didn't hurt me to not learn typing in fifth grade, but I started studying second language when I was 12, and that really, really helped me understand multiculturalism and interacting with people who weren't in my own little bubble. So I'd just like to put that out there. Hope you guys don't cancel that program, and thanks for listening to me.
Hi. I'm sorry to come back again, but now I'm not sure what you did tonight, so I have to ask you. You did approve item seven under personnel, which includes all the cuts and additions on that separate page. Is that correct?
That begins the furlough process, correct.
However, you have not done anything on the budget yet, and the reason for seven was to notify faculty in time according to state and contract rules. So does that mean that you could now reinstate some of these positions?
Correct.
So that everybody has to keep coming back if you want these positions reinstated?
Or write to your legislators and get us more money.
Well, I heard all the comments tonight, and I can't disagree with a lot of them. There's still other ways to look for money. I also think that those people who said that this came out with no one knowing about it, I think we were misled when there was an article in the Almanac today that said no budget items would be addressed until the end of June at your meeting there, and these are essentially sort of budget items that you voted on tonight. So I know why you did it. But I think, I mean, I was on the internet today to get your agenda. I didn't know this was happening tonight. I'm asking all these kids and grownups why they're here. You're not doing anything till the end of June. So I do think you could do a better job, maybe, of communicating to the public what your people said, Plan A, B, and C. I agree with that. Maybe we need more information for the public to know what you're considering. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more, we'll go into board comments. Mr. Puhatch.
I'm sure that some of the other board members will comment on the difficulty of some of the decisions that we're making, and also the difficulty in implementing some of the suggestions that have been posed because of the various mandates that are placed upon us. The one thing I did want to talk about, because it actually hit very close to my own thinking, is the comments about transparency and communication. That's actually one of the reasons that I got involved in this board initially. It's one of the things that I feel strongly about, but I can also share with you from being involved now, how difficult it is to do so while at the same time communicating clearly. There may be any number of things that we try to consider. Many of those things that we would like to consider are either state-mandated, federally-mandated, or contractually mandated, so we don't have the flexibility to simply cut people's salaries or simply end certain programs because those mandates prevent it. So we are working within a fluid environment. We are trying to understand both our own thinking and the feedback of community, and we are trying to make sure that we're not communicating things as being final until they are final. It's very difficult to then go inside of all the details of that and lay out possible scenarios, because if we say A, B, and C, and it ends up being a little bit of A, a little bit of B, a little bit of C, then we're going to be told that we didn't communicate that very clearly either. We understand, and I understand very specifically, the desire for that information, and we've tried to respond to individual inquiries, to emails and things like that with the information that we can share and the information we do have at that time. So I want to say I respect and understand what those comments are, and we are trying, but there are certain things that prevent it from maybe as being effective as you would like us to be.
Thank you. Mr. Schubel.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We appreciate your input. We've listened, and, you know, we will decide accordingly, so thank you for coming out. Also want to congratulate our principals for their Keystone Awards. Wonderful job. Very proud of them. Very proud of those folks. Also, congratulations to our baseball kids. Went to the semifinals, WPL, and came up a little bit short. I want to acknowledge those kids. They overachieved by all measures, and congratulations.
I think May is always such a good month because we see such a broad recognition of various talents, whether they be in the sports field or the academic field. We have the talent to go around, and that's always a nice feeling. And we have to thank our teachers and our administrators for, you know, making that happen with our talented students. The only thing I'd like to talk about tonight is, at the committee meeting, I mentioned that the Steel Center Vo-Tech School, which we are affiliated with, we have the second highest number of students that go to that of ten districts that belong. And one of the things that we should be proud of is that's an ISO certified school. And that means that they meet all of the requirements that all the companies have to meet when they want to meet the manufacturing standards and things to be able to ship overseas. They are at the top quality. They are one of two Vo-Tech schools in the state that have that certification. So we certainly have a lot relying on that school. The other thing is, I don't think some of you know, but you may keep it in mind, is that they sell bakery goods there. You can go, everything's discounted because the students do all of it. They actually are entrepreneurs within the right. They sell bakery goods there. They sell all kinds of meats. You can call ahead because the students, you know, learn to cut the meats properly. And Giant Eagle hires many of their meat cutters. It's a very demanded field. They can't get meat cutters. And another area that you can purchase things in is you can get down to their stall and have a full-service stall, and you can get discounted services. And I mean, like the luxury services you don't get in your general salon. You know, your chair vibrates, the whole thing. So it's really great at a reduced price. So kind of keep that in mind because you're supporting our students and supporting the schools that we're affiliated with.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I just want to address the issue as far as the budget is concerned. I sat in the audience, excuse me, for many years and listened to all of the things that were discussed at the board level. And I have to say that now, sitting on this side of the table, there are a lot of things about the budget that I didn't know, having sat in the audience for over thirty-five years. So I respect what people are saying about not understanding the process and the fact that you feel that we're not sharing with you. But I will say to you that we have looked at this, we will continue to look at it. We have spent hours going line by line. Some of the suggestions that you have made publicly, whether it be at the mic or by email or whatever, phone calls, there's been some good suggestions there. Some of those we already had on the list. Some of the things that you folks are suggesting, we can't do, as Mr. Puhatch mentioned earlier. But please understand that this is not a done deal. We will continue to look at it. But the other hand is, there's only so much money to go around, and just like your family budgets, when you don't have enough money, you have to make changes. And unfortunately, that's the position that we're in right now and what we have to do. We do not take this lightly. A comment was made at another meeting that we don't care. That couldn't be farther from the truth. The people who sit here, trust me, they care. They care very, very, very much for the children in this district, the teachers, and everyone that's employed here. So please understand that we have a very difficult task and one that we wish we didn't have, but we have it and we have to do what we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spikusa?
I really wasn't going to say anything tonight. I think enough has been said, but I appreciate what Mr. Puhatch said and what Mrs. Buckley just said. I think that when I was appointed to the board several years ago, and then I ran for reelection, I told my wife that I'd only be at two meetings a month. I lied. I truly lied. We've, this budget process, we're on the tenth or eleventh budget at this point. We've gone that far. We've been here on Saturday mornings. We've been here at night. This is not something we've taken lightly. We are really trying to do everything we can do. Our hands are tied in many situations. There's a lot of things that we really would probably like to do, but we have no choice and can't do. So just to reiterate what Mrs. Buckley said again, we care and we're trying. So I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I forgot one thing. I just want to say what Mr. Spikusa just said as far as meetings. We do spend a lot of time, but we're not complaining about it. We are happy to do that. And when meetings are called, we're here. People, the board is not complaining about the time that we spend, so please don't walk away from this meeting. See, oh, they just got up there and they were whining. That's not the case. We will continue to look at it and work very hard and do what we can with the money that we have, but the bottom line is, we have to do what we have to do. Thank you.
And I want to announce that we have a class of two thousand and eleven who will be graduating on June fourth, and my son is a member of that class. And they begin their finals tomorrow, so I wish them all well as the seniors begin their finals tomorrow. I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.